Good evening, everyone. This is the, this is a special meeting of the Rockport Planning Board. It's actually a public hearing to go over the the proposed changes to the Rockport zoning bylaw and to hear members of the public comment on those changes. Just so everyone knows, this these these changes are actually, most of these you've already seen once before, which was back in, you know, May of 2016 and before that, I'm sorry, May of, May 16th, 2022, before that in January 2022, when we had our public hearing in January, May 16, we had a town meeting and these were discussed then. They did not get adopted at town meeting primarily because we did not receive two thirds of the votes, even though we received a majority, we didn't receive two thirds. So typically, we're here to go over these again. And perhaps with a new town meeting on this, we will get a different result because of, you know, last town meeting was, it was confusing. And there were some other controversial articles that I think really sucked the air out of the room. This is really just pretty generic stuff. But before I go any further, I'll just read the public notice because that's just something that's done, I guess. So this was the notice that was published twice in the Gloucester Daily Times in the last two weeks and also posted in the town and also on the town website, even though that's not legally required, it was on the town website. So pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 5 and 11, and Chapter 41, Section 81Q, please take notice that the Town of Rockport Planning Board will hold its public hearing at 6:30 PM on October 4, 2022 concerning proposed amendments to the Rockport zoning bylaws. The public hearing will be via Zoom and the Zoom links to the public hearing will be provided prior to the hearing on the posted meeting section of the Town of Rockport website. The public hearing shall be on proposed formatting and organizational changes, substantive policy changes and changes to eliminate or change antiquated provisions of the zoning bylaw. They include, but they're not limited to the following, updating the table of uses, reorganizing and updating the definition section, eliminating or updating outdated sections such as the IA 7 and Section 8E and Section AP, reducing minimum lot size for two simply dwellings in the R District to Section, in Section 6B, changing the parking requirements to eliminate wasteful parking requirements and reflect best practices using flexible parking principles in Section 7, identifying and clarifying the provisions of the Water Supply Protection Overlay District in Section 8 to make the bylaws consist of Water Supply Protection Regulations of the Department of Environmental Protection and to eliminate inconsistencies between the Water Supply Protection Overlay District and the underlying zoning districts. Excuse me one second. Okay. Establishing a threshold development sites for the subsidized housing requirements of Section 8I, Section 9, eliminating waivers for housing construction in the coastal floodplain district, Section 7, removal and moving and fill, change references and numbering to create consistency with site plan review section, Section 14, strengthening zoning enforcement, including financial penalties. And then finally dividing special permit authority depending on the type of permit between the Zone Board of Appeals and the Planning Board. At the public hearing, all interested persons shall be given an opportunity to be heard. The rules for the conduct of the Planning Board hearing shall be found on the Board's webpage. The text of all proposed amendments that described above may be reviewed at the Town Clerk's Office in the Town Hall Building. I don't want you to give the address or in the Town Hall annex in the Planning Board list and listen on the town website. The above documents are also posted online at the Planning Board's webpage on the town website, rockport.gov. Signed by me, September 2022. That's our public notice. So let's, I thought before we get questions from the public, I just thought it would be a good idea to spend about 15 minutes and go through the, you know, the pages where changes have been made. And I have to say that both the sections and the pagination are not in final form. I mean, you're going to find that, that the sections are different because we had other sections that were adopted at the, the May meeting that are not being discussed here. You know, this, everything's going to have to be incorporated into one bylaw, the section numbers are going to change, the pagination is going to change. So don't get worried if they're not the same. And what I'm going to try to do is refer you to the pagination of the current zoning bylaw and also refer you to the pagination of the bylaw, the proposed bylaw that was posted and posted online. And my fellow board member, Tom Mekus, is going to show you on the, on a share screen, the page of the proposed bylaw that I referenced. So at least you can look at it. We're not going to show you the, the page of the current bylaw at the same time because I'm assuming people will have that or have access to that readily. And also just having a split screen would be really technically difficult to do. So I'm sorry about that, but I am going to try to refer to both. So let's go to the couple of things. All the changes that we propose tonight are subject to the two thirds voting requirement at town meeting. They, at the town meeting, they received a majority vote at the last town meeting. But as I mentioned, they did not get the two thirds vote. So therefore, we're going to try again to get the two thirds vote. The, the only, there are a couple of differences between what was presented at town meeting in May of this year and this document. One of the major ones is that the Water Supply Protection Overlay District, which is in the current zoning bylaw, has been completely revised and that's been done in accordance with guidance from the DEP. And also, we, we worked with Eric Hutchins, who I hope is in the audience here, but he was one of the people who was responsible for the Water Supply Protection Overlay District, which was initially react adopted. He's also been working on this one and been a tremendous help. So let me just get, let me just start quickly, let's go to the definition sections because we have a general purpose and basic requirements, which that's pretty generic language, but the definition, okay? We're looking at that and I'm, I actually want to see a different screen here, Tom. Can you make it so I don't see this? I have my notes that I would like to.
Can't affect your screen much, Jason?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at your, what you put up. Let me just get out of this.
Yeah, you likely want to exit full screen, Jason, and then pull up your information on top.
Let me just view options. Okay, yeah, okay. Exit full screen. Okay, let's see. There we go. Yeah. Starting on page one and continuing through page 15, that's where the definitions are. Okay, I'm not going to go over all these changes. These were recommended by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, who we work with on these changes prior to the last special meeting. Most of the changes in the definition section are updates on definitions. The elimination of archaic language and the addition of new definitions to clarify what would be unclear or unworkable definitions. Okay, that's really what we've tried to do. There are some examples here that I am going to touch on on page five of your draft bylaw, the definition of gross floor area has been refined. That has always created problems. And it's been reworked to be, I hope, clearer. And also, we have a diagram that accompanies this definition, which is on page six. There's a new definition of non-medical marijuana establishments in the definitions, although now those establishments are prohibited in the Town of Rockport. And on page 13, the, we've eliminated the Water Supply Protection Overlay District, which those definitions have been eliminated. They are now incorporated in the Water Supply Protection Overlay District action itself. So the rest of them, I mean, we could spend tons of time going over these. They're pretty much self-explanatory. Obviously, if anybody has any comments at the public hearing part of this, please give them, but they're red. And I'm going to move on to the next section here, which is the non-conforming buildings and uses. And this starts on page 15 and goes through page 17. Again, this is the, of the the proposed new bylaw. Couple of things in here, just that need to be touched upon, Cottage Colony on page 16 of the amended bylaw and page nine of the existing bylaw. That, that definition, that has been deleted because there aren't any, Cottage Colony is an archaic definition that, that really shouldn't be in there. Use discontinuance, this is on page 17. That actually is underlined indicating that it's new. It actually isn't. That is the same language that we had in the original bylaw. So please disregard that. That will just have to be changed. And that's pretty much it in the, that section of worthy of note. I mean, obviously, there are other things that you might want to look at. I'm going to move on to the establishment of districts. This is on page 10 of the current bylaw and it's now page 18 of the draft, the new draft bylaw. On page 20 of the draft bylaw, we now list special permits as being granted either by the ZBA or the Planning Board. You can see that designation when you look through the table of uses. There indicated there which, which of the two bodies is responsible for the special permit issuance in any particular case. On page 12 of the current bylaw, on page 21 of the proposed bylaw, at the the May 2022 town meeting, the min, this minimum lot area requirement for accessory dwelling units, which was essentially, you know, the, a double lot, was eliminated as now shown as deleted on page 21 of the so as you can see, that's E, it has a asterisk by it. And that, that is now deleted. It's now, it's been incorporated into the new accessory dwelling unit section that was adopted on May 16. And again, that's one of those things that we're going to have to sort out when we, you know, just do some rearranging of the bylaw to put things in the proper places. Area and dimension regulations. Page 16 of the current bylaw, page 26 of the of the proposed bylaw, page 27. Just some highlights here. It doesn't mean this is everything. I'm just reading some highlights. Eliminates the requirement that accessory dwellings be separated from all of the buildings occupied by people lot by a minimum of 20 feet. This again is addressed in the new accessory dwelling unit provisions that were passed in May of 2022. Page 27, we've eliminated entirely the space requirements for retail and commercial uses. Those, those really belong in the building code and are not a zoning, not the province of zoning bylaws. We just took them out. They're, they don't really, they shouldn't really be in zoning at all. Page 30, we clarify under paid, under accessory buildings and structures that accessory dwelling units are excluded from the minimum separations that are on page 30 again of the, this is of the proposed bylaws. All right, parking requirements, these are start on page 21 of the existing bylaws and page 31, 33 of the proposed bylaws. Essentially, this is a complete rewrite of the parking requirements. This is now a table of parking requirements on page 33 of the proposed bylaws rather than the difficult to read long narrative, which was in the existing bylaw. On page 34 of the proposed bylaw, there is a wholesale revision of the rigid parking requirements in the current bylaw. Parking for multifamily housing and townhouses can cannot be provided for between the housing and the street. So there's not, you're not going to have a paved over area between the street and the housing that's going to be used for parking. Page 34, the concept of shared parking is introduced. These, this is where these can be a reduced number of parking spots. If peak demand for the parking spaces is different, depending on the different uses. In other words, if you have a commercial use and a residential use and essentially they're being occupied or used at different times, you can use the same parking spaces for both and count them for both. And that way you're not, you don't have duplication of parking, which just generates, you know, more over askful. That's the idea here. Page 35 is the ability to waive some of the parking requirements. If the, if the waiver involves less than six spaces, the waiver may be granted by the ZBA and if it's more than six, it's going to be, it could be granted by the Planning Board. Okay, now I'm going to move to page 23 of the current bylaw and page 30, which is page 37 of the proposed bylaw. We've eliminated the exterior lighting for non-residential uses. This is not a zoning matter. It's really a general welfare issue and belongs in the Code of General Bylaws alongside the residential lighting provisions for the in the general bylaws. This is, it's not a zoning issue. These, these lighting, these lighting guidelines apply to existing as well as new commercial spaces. And they're going to have to be rewritten, but they're not, they don't appropriate belong in zoning and that's why they've been eliminated. Page 39, trailers may be used for residential purposes, not more than 30 days and only with a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. The occupancy of a trailer is no longer tied to the obtaining of a building permit from the town for the main house, but there is a 30 day limitation. Page 40 of the new bylaw, the microwave antenna section is eliminated. That's obsolete and no, no lead to have it. No one has microwave antennas anymore. Page 27 of the existing bylaw and 41 of the new bylaws, housing balance. Only amendments, the only amendments here are defining the minimum size of development, which didn't, which did, does not exist in the current bylaw. The new proposed bylaw says six or more units are subject, you have to have six more units in the development to be subject to the requirement that 10% of the housing do not exceed the maximum level for low and moderate incomes established by the Department of Housing and Community Development. In other words, they have to be, they have to stay low or moderate income. If you got six units, 10%, six units or more, 10% of that housing needs to be set aside for low or moderate income. We did not have a number, a figure on that in the current bylaw. Water Supply Protection Overlay District, which is currently in Section 7, which is page 35 in the current bylaw. This is actually in a separate document because it just was too unwieldy to attempt to incorporate it in the in the draft bylaw that, that I've been going through. It's a separate bylaw provision that was posted also on the webpage and, you know, obviously post copies of which were at the clerk's office and the, and the planning board office. This basically, the sole purpose of the Water Supply Protection Overlay District is to protect the drinking water for the town. The current Water Supply Overlay Protection District, which is on page 35 of the bylaw, is confusing. It has several different zones delineated while the DEP actually only requires three. But some of the provisions were of the current bylaw are inconsistent with the actual underlying zoning for the area that the Water Supply Protection Overlay District covers. And moreover, it allowed the ZBA to alter the boundaries of the Water Supply Protection Overlay District. And that we have been told by the DEP that this alteration of boundaries by the ZBA unilaterally was not lawful. In other words, the boundaries are going to be altered for the Water Supply Protection Overlay District. It has to be done with approval of the DEP and has to be done at a town meeting. So that has been changed. The proposed version of the Water Supply Protection Overlay District on page 17 and 18 sets forth six different zones. It prohibits certain activities within the Water Supply Protection Overlay District with no allowance for the issue of special permits for those activities in any of the districts in the Water Supply Protection Overlay District. In other words, they're prohibited. They're going to remain prohibited or water supply is too important to jeopardize. The, these provisions, the ones that, the proposed provisions have been reviewed by the DEP and they've issued a written approval of what we've done, which is, is a good thing. They have said, we've looked at these. We like what you've done. We've approved of them. So there are a number of different zones in this Water Supply Protection Overlay, unless there are questions in the future. I'm not going to go into this any further. It's really dense and it's something, though, that needed to be revisited and redone. And thank you, Eric Hutchins, for getting involved with this. Okay, I'll go to the next section, which is Section 8, the Coastal Flood Plain District. This is page 45 in the current bylaw. Page 50 in the draft bylaws. Pages 52, oh, by the way, Tom, there is a map of the Water Supply Protection Overlay District, a draft map. I don't know if you want to post that just for people to take a look at for a minute. That shows the proposed boundaries. I don't know if you're able to do that, Tom.
What's up now?
Just, that's, that's part of the package of revisions that we have.
Mr. Chair, you have a hand up from Jim Gardner?
Yeah, let, let's, let me just finish this and then, you know, we'll take all these comments. I'm almost done here. I got two more sections. And then we go to the Coastal Flood Plain District, page 45. In the current bylaw, page 50 in the draft bylaws, there are changes, page 52 and 53 have language changes, makes building in the floodplain slightly more restricted than it is now. And I'm sure that after this hurricane Ian and the devastation that it wrought in Florida, everyone can appreciate that, you know, what can happen when one builds houses in areas that are prone to flooding. It can be a disaster. Page 54 eliminates the allowance of new construction in areas that are below the basic floodplain elevation, even if there are already houses there. In other words, it doesn't allow infill of more houses in an area that's below the base floodplain elevation. That's no more infill. What's there is there, but we're not going to, we're, we're not going to, the law doesn't allow putting more houses there for the reasons I spoke about. It's just too, it's too risky. Okay, going to pay site plan review, section 10, page 56 in the current bylaw. Page 73 in the proposed. There are a few stylistic changes there, but nothing worth discussing. It adds one provision on page 79 of the new bylaw. This essentially says that the approval of a site plan will not be effective until the town clerk certifies that 20 days has been elapsed, has elapsed with no appeal. Second, that the proof of recording of the site plan with Essex D Registry shall be presented to the building inspector prior to commencement of work. We skip over several sections that have already been voted approved at town meeting. That's the open space residential development section and the TOVOD. Those have been approved or not. We're not going to talk about those. So we go now to section existing section, I think it is 14, but it could be section 13 too, but it's the, it's the administration provision. This is the last provision that's in the bylaws. This is page 79 in the current bylaw and page 80 in the proposed bylaw. Here are some of the things that have been provided in the new bylaw. If a person files a written request for enforcement of a zoning bylaw with the building inspector, the building inspector is required to investigate the complaint. He may or may not find that it's valid, but he needs to investigate it if he gets a written complaint. If there is a violation, the building inspector must give written notice to the alleged violator and require the abatement of the violation within a reasonable time. And two, the building inspector may institute a non-criminal action, meaning a civil action against the violator and each day of a violation could be a separate $300 offense. I know our building inspector, Paul Orlando, was very much in favor of these changes. To give him more enforcement power, these, and these are, we hope will be adopted. You know, whenever the next special town meeting is going to be. I think I've covered everything. If I missed something, I apologize, but you know, there's a lot to go through here. So anyway, that is kind of it in a nutshell. I don't know. I, I guess we can open it to the questions. Or comments. I mean, this is, I guess, questions or comments. We just gotta, you know, be, obviously, be good, get to the point and address yourself to, you know, the issues that we're talking about. We want to hear from you. This is a draft document and as we've done in other documents, we, you know, we've changed things, we've modified things and you know, so I guess what, what we'll do is we'll take take people's hands in session. We're trying to get everybody that has their hands up. Try to get those people who haven't said anything before want to chime in a second time. So I think that's about it on my end.
So Mr. Chair, we have hands from Jim Gardner, Paul Orlando and Bill Tobin as of right now.
Why don't we take those in order?
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
This is Jim Gardner, One Pleasant Street, also Chairman of the DPW Commissioners. I just wanted to say that with regard to the watershed protection overlay district, that thanks to Eric Hutchins, he identified that the initial rewrite of the zoning had apparently inadvertently removed the setbacks from the emergency. rewrite of the zoning had apparently inadvertently removed the setbacks from the emergency water sources and Eric sort of diligently worked to get those things put back and get the the zoning rewritten in a way so that the the watershed protections are in fact in place. I know he went through those with Aaron Chaluffo, who's the Assistant Director. And Aaron was satisfied with how they worked. So the, I just want to say the DPW is in favor of the proposed zoning for the Watershed Protection Overlay.
Great, thank you. We, just to give you a little history there, I did revise it. And I specifically with, we specifically withheld it, Jim, from the May Town Meeting because I knew it had more work to do and I wanted to reach out to get his. He agreed pretty much with everything that had been revised, but he added some things which, as you've indicated, were important. So this is great collaborative effort and I'm glad you're, you're happy with it. Okay. Who? Next, next hand.
Paul?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, yeah, I just, I think these are all great changes. And hopefully we can get these put through at town meeting. I just have a couple of comments. One of them is the definition of gross floor area. And if there's any way that we can delete the last sentence in that definition and be able to treat gross floor area the same way for for both sections of the bylaw, that would be very helpful to me. And I know it would be very helpful to people that are trying to work with the bylaw because I've spent a lot of time to explain that why it's different, treated differently in two sections of the bylaw.
Oh, yeah, you're, you're referring to this. Know what you're talking about, but notwithstanding the preceding sentence, a calculation gross floor area solely for determining whether site plan review is required for residential. Okay, yeah, it's, it's changing the measurement of gross floor area. One measurement to determine whether site plan review is required and a different measurement when it's, that's not the determination. I agree with you 100%.
Okay.
Agreed. I mean, that is so confusing.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, you're right. Good.
And I just have one other comment. It's on the, the section that's being deleted under the Coastal Flood Plain.
Wait, 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 hold on. Let me.
Yeah, I think that's page 54.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead. Which one is this now?
It's the section that's being deleted that allows the zoning board to grant special permits. If you look at that language, it says it allows them to grant special permits for new construction or substantial improvements, which if you have a building that's substantially damaged, I don't know. I'm not sure if the intent to prevent people from repairing an existing building. And I think that that's what that might be doing.
Yeah, it's hard to know. I, I see what you're saying. I, of course, you could, someone could put on an addition. I mean, they're not repairing, but they're just enlarging. And that could be considered a substantial improvement also. But your, your concern is if they're actually repairing an existing structure.
Right, yes, yeah.
All right, well, that, that's something that is worth noting. Yep.
Yeah, and, and those are the only comments I have. I think it's, it's great and I think you guys have done great work and hopefully we can get this going.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jason, I, I think on this substantial improvements, that's going to be defined as what 50% of the value as it normally is?
Well, it's defined, it can be defined different ways. I don't, I don't know, but let's, I mean, we, we don't have to figure it out today.
Okay.
It's a, it's a valid comment, I think, that, you know, that repairing is one thing and building a brand new addition, that's 50%, you know, 60% of the existing structure is a different thing, so.
Well, there's a difference between improve and repair also.
Yeah, exactly. So let's, let's talk about that.
Okay.
Next on the list will be Bill Tobin. Hi, Jason. Can you list your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Bill Tobin, 24 Beach Street. Jason, why is the planning board dividing its special permit authority between the zoning board of appeals and the planning board? What kind of a situation allows the planning board to give up some of their authority? Could you explain why that?
Yeah, we're not, we're not giving it up. I mean, actually, the the zoning board still has the vast majority of special permit authority. There are a couple of areas where we do have special permit authority. For example, in the existing bylaw, we have special permit authority for removing a fit, removal of fill. We've had that for a while now. We, under the accessory dwelling unit, the planning board has special permitting authority for the, if the setbacks can't be reached for an accessory dwelling unit, that's new. And then an one is, and, and then in the parking, we, as I mentioned in the, my attempt to summarize things, the zoning board of appeals has special permit authority if it's five or fewer spaces that they want a waiver. But the planning board has special permit authority if it's more than. Those are just examples of where different special permit authorities. So it's not really, you know, it's not really giving or anything up. It's just kind of making it, making the calculate, making the chart state which entity has the special permit authority. That's all.
Ah, okay. So in other words, your zoning board, your zoning board is, is in your, your dividing line between each other is much more clear than this may. Because I think that would be good. And would, it would, it would improve the system. I think that's your intent, correct? Make it faster.
To make it, you know what I mean? Clearer for people reading it, what board they need to, to get their special permits. Some things, as I mentioned, the, under the zoning bylaw, the existing and the new one, the ZBA still has, I think they have their 20 instances of special permit authority. I think the plan is like six or seven and that. But it just lets, the chart just lets people know which body has that special permit. That's all. It's really just, so there's nothing.
It's streamlined, right?
Yeah.
Jason, wasn't there, wasn't there also a consideration when it was going to be a slight plan review? Then that would be taken completely by the planning board rather than divided up? And have the ZBA do some of the site plan review for parking? Wasn't that part of the thinking?
No, I think, I think it's always been with the parking that, yeah, and that's why we have six or more.
Right.
Six or more, that dovetails with site plan review.
Right, simplifies.
You have less than, less than six. The ZBA deals with it. We don't, the planning board doesn't deal with it at all. Right. Okay.
Eric Hutchins, President Sanders.
Eric. You. Thank you. Yeah, this is Eric Hutchins, 45 Falls Lane. I just wanted to add a couple of points on the Watershed Protection Overlay modifications. As many of you know, I, I worked on a number of the past bylaw changes over a decade ago. And there really hasn't been a lot of any changes of any significance. And I got to congratulate the planning board for digging their teeth into this because the planning board actually found just a lot of leftover language that just was not conducive to public interpretation or even, or even municipal. This bylaw change, it, just for those on the call, is not an upgrade of protection measures. It's a clarification of what we had in place. That's really what this is. I'm just getting, as an example, one of the definitions that we had in the old bylaw, that's been there for 15 to 20 years, probably 25. Some of this goes back to the 80s, defining high water, the, the high water table in Rockport. And the definition that we had before, groundwater elevation determined by monitoring wells and historical water table fluctuation data compiled by the US Geological Survey. Well, the US Geological Survey doesn't have any monitoring wells in our town and we don't have any of that data. So we reached out to the Board of Health and simply used the DEP language that's used for septic systems for high groundwater table. Just a few clarifications like that so that, so that people who may be wanting to develop have a consistent language versus where am I going to find a monitoring well by the US Geological Survey in Rockport? It doesn't exist. I worked with, also with this effort, two other members of the Ad Hoc Water Committee need to be recognized, Ashley DeRosiers and Diane Cartwright. Basically, we went through the work that the planning board did and compared and contrasted it to the old language, line by line, over and over again, and then went back to Jason and went through it to clarify what proposed languages we thought just helped improve it. That was really what this effort was all about. Then we went and met with DPW GIS staff who's managing this call tonight, Rob Craig. And as well as Aaron with the DPW to go through these enhancements line by line. When I say line, I mean line on the map to make sure that they stood out, people could recognize them and fixing the agenda, the, not the agenda, sorry. The legend on the map was kind of confused. So it was basically a top to bottom clarification of what already existed. This is not a new zone. We're not expanding. It's cleaning up of what already existed. And I think it feels really good from my perspective to finally get this cleaned up. And I take some of the fault from 10 years ago for it being a little sloppy, but we're getting it cleaned up now. Thank you. I appreciate this effort.
Thank you, Eric.
Mr. Chair, I don't have any other hands in the audience.
Okay.
You need a motion to close the hearing?
Well, yeah, I just, I wanted to mention one other thing that I, I didn't mention when my, I tried to summarize things, but I, I mentioned it in the, it was mentioned in the public hearing notice, but didn't mention it today, which is the in the scheduled area and dimensions. Minimum lot dimensions, we have, we've, for the two area square feet, two family lots, we've taken that number from 15,000 to 10,000 square feet. The minimum lot size, all the setbacks are exactly the same as the one family. It's just that the lot size has been diminished. This is an attempt to allow for maybe more housing in the town of Rockport. That's why this was done specifically. But other than that, it changes nothing else about lot size, lot coverage, all that stuff is exact, is the same. It's just that the lot is our, go from 15 to 10. I just want I mentioned that. So, yeah. No other hands up, wow.
I have a hand from Eric Hutchins.
Yeah, just a, a quick question. Procedure, is there a targeted date yet for the town meeting? This is question one. And then my second question is, how many articles will this be at town meeting? Is this going to be broken down into a couple of sections or all as one?
I think, Eric, what we've been talking about is breaking it down into maybe five different sections, five or six. We hate to have a situation where, first of all, it makes it simpler, I think, for people to get their head around it, to have different sections, different warrant articles. And the second thing is, we don't want a situation where a controversy over one article will sink the entire, you know, zoning vision, and that would be a real shame. So what we're going to do is, for example, the Water Supply Overlay Protection District, that will be its own article. I can tell you that right now. The definitions will be their own article. We'll just break these down into different articles and go through them. Hopefully we'll get, you know, the two thirds on all of them. But if we, if we don't get the two thirds on one of them, well, you know, it would be unfortunate, but it's not going to kill the rest of them. And, you know, that's, I think that was the problem last, last time in May, it was just too much. Yeah, just too much for people to, you know, and people come to town meeting and they haven't really studied things in advance and, you know, they, it's just a lot, it's a lot to look at. If you had to come to town meeting and look at this for the first time, it would be difficult. As you know. So that's the answer to your question. If there are no other hands up. I guess we want to close the public hearing. We need to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
A motion by Tom Mekus, any second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Peter Cutner, roll call vote. Tom.
Hi.
Eric. I'm sorry, Tom. Eric is not on the planning board now, at least. Peter. Harry.
Right.
And me on the fourth, I'll vote in favor to close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. It's 719. And I also have another motion here that I'd like to offer. I'd like to offer a motion to have a recommendation from the planning board to refer these, these amendments to the Board of Selectmen with the recommendation that they be adopted and be placed on the agenda for a special town meeting sometime in the next several months.
You got that, Peter?
I need to repeat that? I can repeat it.
I think you mean to be placed on the warrant.
Yeah.
I say that, yeah, placed on the warrant, yes. Let me go back again. I want to make a motion for this board to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that the proposed changes that we've discussed here today and which have been posted be sent to the Board of Selectmen and be placed on the warrant for a special town meeting and a vote of the town. Makes sense?
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Tom, seconded.
Harry, seconds.
Seconded by Harry. I'll vote, Peter.
Hi.
Tom.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
And I'll vote in favor, so we'll do that. I'll write a letter to the Board of Selectmen in the very near future, recommending that these proposed changes be placed on a warrant and be considered at a town meeting in the near future. Any other matters we need to take up relating to this special town meeting? We have our regular meeting next Thursday. No? Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Harry.
Okay.
Seconded by Peter, roll call vote. Tom.
Hi.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi.
And I'll vote in favor, motion, meeting adjourned at 7:21. Thank you, folks. Thank you, Robert, for recording and we'll move forward.
See you Thursday.
Good evening, everybody. Everybody, everything, everybody.